Regular meeting of the Indianapolis Public Library Board of Trustees. Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Biederman.
Present.
Dr. Matata.
Present.
Dr. Palacio.
Present.
Dr. Riolo.
Present.
And Ms. Tribble.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Great. The chair recognizes the quorum. Good evening, everyone. My name is Hope Tribble, and I'm the president of the Indianapolis Public Library's Board of Trustees. Welcome to the October meeting. And thank you for joining us. Tonight, we're here at the Wayne Branch. And want to acknowledge and give a shout out to the Wayne Library staff for your hospitality this evening. Before we dive into the branch manager's report, I want to highlight a few aspects of the Wayne community. Wayne serves a lingually diverse area where more than seventy languages are spoken in the community. The library staff is attentive to these needs. They customize the collection for the community, provide language resources, and offer special programming. Additionally, you may have noticed that this branch has a food pantry in its lobby, which has been consistently stocked through generous donations and the dedication of the Wayne staff since 2021. Like all of our branches, it's uplifting to see in action the empathy, resourcefulness, and personal attention shown by our library staff. It's very inspiring, so. Continuing this theme of resourcefulness, I'd like to highlight a bit the relationships that NDPL has with community organizations who are dispensable to the library's mission, vision, and success. Our partnerships are closely aligned with community needs and extend our capacity to serve the public. From our health partners, like the Marion County Health Department that helps with vaccinations, to Crossroads Easter Seals, who provided the specialized computer workstations at each branch that's designed to be more accessible to more people, to the Marion County Sheriff's Department, who supplies gun locks that are free to anyone who asks for one, to the individual subject matter experts who join us to share their important legal, business, and technical expertise at library workshops and classes, to the Immigrant Welcome Center, who helps with English conversation circles. The depth and breadth of NDPL partnership connections are really impressive. Our partners provide essential support. And as we look to launch our new strategic plan in 2025, these partnerships will help us to meet our strategic goals. Thank you to all of our partners. And now ask Ms. Mulliken to step up and give her report. Welcome, Melinda. Thanks again for hosting us tonight.
You're welcome. I have a soft librarian's voice, so I want to make sure you can hear me. So, well, good evening, everyone. President Tribble, board members, everyone. Yes, my name is Melinda Mulliken, and I did want to add in, I have been at this branch since 2001 and manager since 2012, just sort of morphed into the position, as it were. I live in the community, so it's not uncommon for me to go to a grocery store and be recognized as a lady librarian. It's kind of cool. But kind of like, I'm not on the job at the moment, but get that book in the drop box, you'll be fine. Before I start with my PowerPoint, I did want to talk a little bit about the history of the branch. Wayne Branch first opened in December of 1969 in the shopping area right along Rockville Road. If you're curious, it was at 7341 Rockville. I believe there's an Afro something store in there at the moment. Because of increased need, it was increased in 1973, but they still needed more space. So this building opened to the public March 21st, 1983. And through the years, we had several smaller renovations, new carpet, electrical, et cetera. Then we closed December of 2019 and then opened June 22nd, 2020, in the middle of the pandemic. But we were thrilled to have all the updates. Well, because we opened in the middle of the pandemic, and we opened with other branches opening again after COVID, we still have people coming in going, oh, we love your branch. How long have you been open? Welcome. We've been here for a bit, but we'll do what we can to help. Before we closed, we knew that we would be closed for renovation. We wanted to make sure that our community partners, the schools, knew how they could access our online resources. So we had meetings with the media specialists and with others who would need to have this information to make sure they knew how to contact us. We also shared with our public how to find other locations. One thing we learned many years ago, when we had a train wreck out here, people love to come in our parking lot, no matter what else is going on. So we had, here's where, here's other branches, we're closed, you can't come in, but you can go to Eagle, Decatur, et cetera. So we just want to make sure that people got their library resources while we're closed. And our staff, you may be wondering, we went to different library locations around the system. Some, like my colleague behind me, our circulation supervisor, were persons in charge at different locations, whoever needed the help whenever. So it was kind of fun, kind of took me back to my beginning days with the library. Decatur one day, Lyndale the next day, really depended on who needed what. And it's impromptu story time at College Avenue, pajama time, yes. Harken back to my children's librarian days. And on to the slides, we do the who we are. Is this, do I do the clicker?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So we have one full-time branch manager, myself, a full-time adult librarian, two part-time supervisor librarians. We're the only branch at the moment with two supervisor librarians. One who is on his third career, started military, and then school system is retiring at the end of November. So we'll miss him, and we're looking at replacing or figuring out that staffing. We have a public services associate who does teen and adult, who is currently in library school, computer lab assistant, part-time, full-time juvenile librarian, part-time juvenile librarian, an hourly public services associate, also known as a substitute, full-time library services supervisor, a full-time library assistant III, two full-time library assistant IIs, one who was part-time until about a month ago, was able to do a full-time position. We love it. Two part-time library assistant IIIs, one of whom will start with us soon. I'm thrilled because somebody else in the building will be speaking Spanish. So I'm looking forward to Daniel starting soon. And then five hourly library pages and five volunteers. Next slide. As to who we serve, according to Savvy in 2022, we currently serve a population of 73,256 people. Of that, 68.1% are white, 26.7% are black, 15.6% are Hispanic or Latino, and 1.4% are Asian. We do have a slightly higher racial ethnicity diversity index here at Wayne, 0.59 compared to downtown of 0.48. 14.8% of our population are foreign-born, come to us from all around the globe. Since I've been at Wayne, I've seen waves of new community members come from Eritrea, from Ethiopia, Somalia, Nigeria, and most recently Haiti. In fact, we're a branch that are doing Haitian Creole conversation circles, which have been very well attended. A lot of teachers and others in our community are thrilled to be able to learn how to communicate with our new community members. When we reopened in 2020, we decided to open a small food pantry, named after a former staff member here, it's Willie's Little Free Pantry. We have community members who donate, and some of our staff will donate to it as well. Food we put out in the morning is often gone by the time we close, so we know that there's a need. And because of that, I did include a population graph. We have 2,128 people, at least as far as the statistics in 2022. Of that, 745 are white, 141 Hispanic or Latino, 1,248 black, and 60 Asian. And those, according to these statistics, as to being in food deserts. So we're trying to fill that need. And one of the things that we put on our pantry is if we don't have food here, here's where else you can go to find the food resources. Our connection with Gleaners and other churches in the area will help people find the food that they need. So we do what we can. We currently serve 29 schools, eight private, 21 public. Amongst our private schools is Tahid Islamic School over on High School Road, Covenant Christian High School, which is also in our shared system, Indy West School, which is west of us, as well as Crosspoint Baptist. And Wayne Township Schools, we were talking about the number of languages. They have, in addition to all the others, they have Wayne Preparatory Academy, Wayne Township Preschool, Adult Ed, Achieve Virtual Education Academy, also known as AVE. It's an online-only high school. So students from all over Indiana can join in. So we end up proctoring many of some of those students. They have 11 elementary, two middle schools, a ninth-grade center, and two high schools. Within Wayne Township Schools, in addition to students coming from Indianapolis, students come from 79 different countries, speaking 78 different languages. Yes, it was daunting trying to figure out how to get library information to everybody. Well, because of that, the school has what's called Parent Square. So I know when I send information over to my contacts with the school system, they can send out the information via Parent Square, and the families can choose what language they want to access that information. So that's very helpful for us to hand out and send out information about what we're doing here. Under how we serve, let me get our next slide. There you go. Just to highlight some of it, because there's a lot of statistics here. Our average monthly door count is 6,501. As of September of this year, we had 17,646 current cardholders and 5,856 active cardholders. And this past September, I have my lovely community partner behind me, we added 292 additional cardholders through Adult Ed's Adult Literacy Week. And yes, our wonderful clerks processed within about 10 days 292 applications.
That's the candy.
Yes. And our newest cardholders, this was the fun part, Sakura from Programming joined me for the first event there. We were handing out library card applications in French, Haitian Creole, Amharic, Tagriniya, and Spanish. And we missed a class, by the way, so we're going to be, or I've already talked with the teacher. She's printed off applications. So we'll have 30-plus more coming. Instead of having them come to us and do a very quick and dirty library card applications, they're doing them at the school, and then I will go over to the school and do the show and tell, so they know how to use their cards. We have 72,368 items in our collection on the shelves here as of this month, up from 71,971 in September. So we are a drop-off point here, and we've been going through, we try to redistribute when we can accordingly. And then, as you know, many of our locations have hotspots. Out of the 30 hotspots, the total that we received since December 2022, last time I checked, we had 10 left. And it's not uncommon for us to get multiple phone calls in the mornings, hey, hey, do you have one in? We may, we may not, we'll let them know, yes, we have one in, first come, first served. Unfortunately, there's more need than we have materials. If we go to the next slide, we have adult and family programs. This is my fun part. I like to share photos. So the top two are during the summer reading program. As many of you know, we are lucky enough, our partners, with the school system, to have the Wayne Township Lunch Bus, also known as the Giants Cafe, pulls up alongside our curb. And we discovered while children are eating, they're a captive audience. So we have various community members, including some of you, who come out to read to the kids. And we love, as librarians, we love to have the kids be exposed to other people, non-librarians, so they get the idea that, no, it's not just librarians are reading. People they recognize in their community come and read. And talk a little bit about why it's important to keep reading. So, and of course, there's another one up there, the fire truck comes out. And the firemen, yes, they will take turns reading to the kids. They talk about fire safety, they get, the kids get to go visit the truck, climb onboard, get the photo op, that type of thing. The bottom two photos are from the Teen Mystery Program. This is a program I've been doing for many years with the assistance of staff from around the system and our illustrious Dr. Matata. We did the program for 14 teens. And in case you're wondering, yes, we're doing it again next April. It's during National Library Week, April 12th, 2025, put on your calendar. We're going to use a storyline from the very first Teen Mystery that I did in 2001. Yes, it's been a minute. It's called Righteous Revenge. So if you would like to be part of that, whether playing a suspect or not, let me know. I have some outreach photos as well. Let's see, oh, actually, wait, actually, can you go back one? I was able to add in a photo, the bottom is our yarn club. That was started by a librarian here over 10 years ago, I believe, and it's still going strong. It's a program that, if you're working on a yarn project, come in, socialize, you know, talk with other people. If you need some help with your project, chances are somebody is going to know how to do that. It's not a class, it's just come and hang out and work on your project. And that's been very popular. Now we go to the next screen. And this is our outreach. Unfortunately, I go to these events and I forget to take photos. There's one of, it's myself with the president of the 40 West Business Association at the Wayne Township Fire Department's Annual Safety Day. I am and have been a secretary of that association for a few years. And the bottom is Sakura and me at the Wayne Township Adults, Wayne Township Schools, adult education during their annual literacy week. And as I said, we handed out, or we got library card applications from 292 adult students. And yes, I will be working with the 30-plus. We'll do a show and tell, and then they will come here for a tour, so they can learn their way around the branch as well. Because that's, part of the piece is missing is, yes, they get their cards, but how do they use them? So we want to make sure that the students know that they can come, and they don't have to pay anything to come in the public library. That's been a hurdle. Last page, our last screen should be our highlights. These are few of the landmarks in our area. We have the Beano Trail, among others. I'm sure many of you coming in this evening, I don't know if you encountered, were stopped by the CSX train. There are two tracks, which double your chances of spending some quality reading time waiting on the train. It's not uncommon for somebody to think, I'll be there, I'm on the other side. That's fine, we'll wait. So, and I don't know if you saw on our grounds, but thanks to coordination of Wendy Johnson and Volunteer Services, the help of Providence Landscapers, the hard work of our Eli Lilly volunteers, and our coordination by our volunteer coordinator here at Wayne, Jennifer Hudson. We're happy to say we had some great work done at our property. You can actually see the creek that runs along our property line. We have even found a culvert we didn't know was there. So it looks so much better. And so we're trying, we do this annually to try to keep the area looking nice. As always, our programming will change and evolve to serve the needs of our diverse community. We'll continue to participate in school literacy events, do monthly storytimes at area daycares, send out a monthly emails to a long list of community and school partners. We'll make as many connections as we can, letting people know, yes, we're here, you're welcome to come in. And our thanks to the Library Board of Trustees for your continued support. The door is always open should you want to join in a program or just observe. Any questions? You're very welcome.
Appreciate that report. Do any of our board members have questions or comments? Dr. Palacio.
Thank you very much for all you do here. I know it's been here for a long time. With all those schools around, and you mentioned some are online or one of them, how many students do you get here every, on a daily basis?
We get a mixture. We have, like preschoolers come in mornings, early afternoon. We have school age, they'll come in with their Chromebooks. We have ninja teenagers, if you know what I mean. They come in, they use a collection, and they go off and do their thing. I would say 100-plus, maybe, on a regular basis. Not all at the same time, thank goodness.
Ninja meaning they're like stealth and in and out before you know it.
Yes, stealth.
They were like.
Well, when we renovated, we were hoping to have a teen room, but we have a teen wall. So they'll come in, grab their graphic novels or their fiction or whatever, go in, because they can self-check. So they do the self-check, and they're out again. So we try to catch them with information, hey, there's a mystery program, hey, there's a craft program. Heard from a couple, actually, teens who wanted to know, you're actually doing a Swiftly Strong program? That's Taylor Swift, right? Yep. If you don't want to be downtown, come out here, you know, Creature Bed Necklace. My daughter Swifty will be volunteering for that, too. So, so we try to grab them for programs when we can.
The superintendent here in Wayne Township, Jeff Butts, deeply appreciates this partnership because you've been such an incredibly valuable. He has built such an incredibly reliable relationship, even when it was closed, using the facilities there. Just awesome. And just to commend you and your staff, your colleagues, for all the great work of building that kind of relationship so that you're highly, highly valued. I remember when this space was being built, and I think the wall here was closer in, I can't remember what it was.
Well, we added study rooms on the other side of this wall. That's why, yeah, it's, this room is sort of an odd shape. We are loving the sound buffering. Nothing like, remember the Harry Potter days? Nothing like having 30 teenagers or tweens in here doing Quidditch. Yeah. Thank you to the sound buffering.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you to your staff, your colleagues, they're doing so much.
Oh, Dr. Palacio.
How many teen programs do you have per week?
Per week, we have, well, every, we have like Teen D and D every other week. We'll have some drop-in craft-type things every other week. Recognizing a lot of our teenagers have school and other requirements. And actually, I'm glad you asked that, because, and planning for our programming next spring. They're out for two weeks, all right. They're ours for two weeks. Because one thing we've discovered is you have to, any program you do has to be their weekend or an evening. So kind of list, Monday, Tuesday evening, when this room's available, or 4:30, 4 o'clock, 4:30 on a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So trying to make sure we're balancing what we're doing with their other obligations, which is why the Saturday evening Teen Mystery works, because it's, they don't have a school day the next day. It's not a part of a school day where they have band or whatever else going on. So we know we catch some tweens in there, too, some 11, 12-year-olds. But, you know, we're getting them ready to come to the teen programs as well. Welcome.
You mentioned that you started with 30 hotspots and you're now down to 10. Is that the normal number for, of hotspots that we usually have in branches or?
I know right now that is a hot commodity everywhere. I know there's been a, most branches don't have them, because we can actually look up. If we don't have one here, we can look at the whole system to see if there's any available. And frequently, there's none anywhere. You know, you may have one or two turn up throughout the day, and then a lot of times if it's here with everybody calling around, a lot of times, if they can get it reset quick enough, it'll be gone within a couple hours.
And that's assuming they come back with all their parts, too. There have been some times when it's missing a cable or it's missing something, so we can't really lend out missing some pieces, so.
If that would happen to the 20, they either became inoperable or were lost or?
So they'll never pay back.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah. I mean, we have some good response from our tech learning team that if we're missing a part, you know, we can add notes or whatever, and then they'll send us replacements, so we can get it reset and add that in, so at least we can lend that again. But unfortunately, we've had some that just haven't come back. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, thank you so much for that report. Now we'll move on to public comment. Ms. Gilbert.
Yes, we do have two speakers this evening, but before we begin, we do welcome feedback from the public about our Indianapolis libraries. And this is a time when the public may address the library board. If there are several individuals representing the same group, please select a spokesperson. Please do not repeat the same comments someone else has offered. Please note that this public comment time is not appropriate for them and appropriate for commenting on matters related to employee changes, employee complaints, or alleged employee misconduct. Any such matter should be brought promptly to the attention of the CEO or the Human Resources Department, where matters can be properly addressed in compliance with established. Department, where matters can be properly addressed in compliance with established library policies and procedures. A five-minute limit will be allowed for each speaker. Each speaker should give their name, and if they are speaking on behalf of a group. First person to speak is Terry Gunn, and then we'll have Michael Torres.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am most happy to be here. Usually, I'm here in and out delivering library card applications from new students. But Melinda does such a wonderful job that oftentimes she hand-delivers the completed cards to our school on Morrison High School Road before I even have time to come back. So kudos to her staff, they do a wonderful job. If you're not familiar with the Wayne Township Adult Education Program, we are sort of four-tiered. We have a language learning program, thus Melinda's attention to all the languages. So people come to us, adults come to us. As newcomers, which we assign them Level One after we've done some evaluating on what their language skills are, their exposure to English. Some of them are Level Two, so they're in another class. And then our Level Three, Four students have not yet reached the level where we believe they would be successful in our high school program. So they're probably in Level Three, Four for the longest time, just so we can assure them and they can assure us that we're not going to put them into a program that's too rigorous for them. So once they have been promoted into the high school equivalency, which is now the GED program, they can be there for as long as it takes. We generally do testing of our students after 30 hours. A week of instruction is only six hours, because we know as adults that they have obligations either at home or work or both. So they come to us in classes either in the morning from 9 until 12, or they come in the evening from 5:30 to 8:30, their choice of two days or two nights. And I, my role for the last five years has been as a life coach, because their, their challenges are not just education, their challenges are getting linked with the resources that they need to be successful members in the community. So that's the role of life coaches, and we have life coaches for both morning and evening We know that the library is primary in their life, because they come to us for education. And what better place to come with their children, with themselves, to use the conversation circle, be able to speak in their native language, and then communicate with like-minded individuals. So they can borrow DVDs here, they can borrow bilingual materials here. In fact, I hadn't been in this building to realize the walls that are directly behind us are just filled with probably 15 different language-printed materials, DVDs. Melinda does a fantastic job. She communicates with us at Wayne as to the programs that are being offered, and she definitely meets the needs that we have. So our students who succeed in getting a GED, we want to get them into the labor force. So we have a career training program, and we work with Area 31 in Wayne Township at Ben Davis for some of that. We have medical classes, we have electrical, plumbing, HVAC. So I think our most popular probably are the medical assisting classes, CCMA classes, because we've found that a lot of our students are doing this in their home countries. So that's something that they recognize as being a good fit for them. So we can help them with the language, help them with the certifications that they need to be a part of the workforce. So we have not just the Wayne Township, that's our, our biggest hub, but we have programs at John Knox Church in Speedway, we have programs in Brownsburg, Plainfield, Monrovia, Mooresville. We're going to open one up in Danville next year in January. So we know there's a need, Melinda knows there's a need, and hopefully now, as you meet people, you'll send them our way, because we're very proud. We've been awarded by the state Program of Excellence. So we have a very dynamic director, Kristy McIntyre-Grey, and I'm trying to think how long she's been with us, maybe eight years, but she comes from workforce development. So, yeah. So any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Gunn. This is public comment, but it's almost kind of an extension of our, our branch report. So if, if there are any questions, I'm gonna make an exception here. Thank you so much for that information.
Like I said, she's earned this and many more.
Happy Halloween, right? Thank you, and thank you for your partnership. And Mr. Torres, as you come forward, just so you know, when the, if you get to five minutes, it'll sound like Mike is getting a phone call, but it's actually the buzzer. Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Torres. I'm a Public Service Associate at Central Library. And I want to say that every month when the board packet is posted online, one of my main reads is the personnel resolution. The resolution posts new employees, separated, retired employees, and sometimes reclassified employees. A month ago, Yana McGraw, NDL's first social worker, left our library system. As someone who saw the connections, the building of the resources, the successes she created in handling unique patron requests, I'm taking this time tonight to thank her for building a significant foundation that will hopefully allow us to continue serving those non-traditional needs of our patrons. I recall several board meeting, board committee meetings years ago while Dr. Jett was on the board, where the subject of hiring the social worker was raised. This was going to be a new venture for us all, and not sure we all knew what, exactly what to do or expect. Library staff had been relying on the few resources we had access to in providing these needs, so when Yana came on board, we were relieved someone trained to handle these necessary needs was coming on board. Prior to hiring Yana, we relied on security, perhaps too heavily, but we did our best to maintain an environment that was good for everyone. I mentioned to Yana that I had a conversation with Council Vice President Ally Brown at our, at our Fall Labor Fest, and she asked me how the social worker was doing. So before Yana left, I asked her to send me some examples of engagement with patrons, asking for help. Here's a couple. Long-term patron of the library had been coming to the library prior to her start in 2021. This patron was an older gentleman with the history of justice involvement that made housing difficult to obtain because of the restrictions of placing him into housing. The patron engaged Yana regularly for the, the last three years to connect with community partners, to fill out applications for housing, connect with social security, medical appointments, transportation, obtain vital documents such as social security, state identification, birth certificate verification of social security benefits. Yana said it was hard for those who are experiencing housing insecurities to hold onto vital important documents as things get lost or stolen. While waiting for his name to be pulled from the housing pool, the patron would go in and out of the shelter, stay on the streets, have some justice involvement, et cetera, in order to meet his housing needs. After three years of Yana assisting the patron with obtaining documents, connecting to community partners, this patient has been housed since March of this year and continues to thrive and be stable in his housing and meeting his daily needs. Another patron, Yana said, had been coming to her office consistently over the last three years. The patron was an elderly lady who is housed but does not have a lot of support from family members. She requires someone to pay her bills each month from her monthly income. Often what is left over is not enough pay, to pay for other things such as hygiene, food, clothing, shoes, et cetera. During the last three years, this patron had been connected to services that support seniors aging in place, food resources and clothing resources, home food delivery as she lacks transportation to get around. The patron relied on Yana to assist her with making calls when she does not understand what is being asked of her from agencies or when she receives benefit cards in the mail from Medicare service providers. She trusts the social work office and looks to the office to provide her information, guidance, and connection to hear what is going on in her life. Recently, the patron had all her teeth removed and needed access to medical supplies for post-op treatment. Yana was able to assist the patron with connecting to resources in the community to help her and also explore options her Medicare monthly benefits could support her. The patron is lonely and often feels she doesn't have anyone to help her. Yana has been a place for her to come over the last three years to support her and provide guidance and direction. The patron remains housed and has all these needs in, to maintain her stability and being housed. In addition to solving unique requests from patrons, Yana created multiple community partnerships. Community partnerships are key for being successful for all our patrons in the system. At Central, we have continually had various community partners that connect with patrons. Some are Constellation Wireless, covering our kids and family, Vet Center, Marion County Treasurer's Office, Marion County Minority Health Coalition, Community Care International Revenue, Internal Revenue Service, Tax Relief Help. There are others, but these partners have been consistent. The IRS and Neighborhood Christian Linguist Service Tax Help Division comes every Monday. In closing, this is just one, but a doozy example of the unique talent that NDL has, the contributions many have given us, so I want to thank Yana for the years of hard work and that she will not be forgotten. Thank you.
Torres, and we've heard from Ms. McGraw at board meetings over the years, and we are appreciative of her work and for the ground, the ground setting that she has done. So that concludes public comment. Ms. Gilbert?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Thank you.
In recognition, sorry. In recognition of Yana's service to the library, she was also extremely culturally, culturally competent. She made an attempt to cross cultural boundaries and understood that people from different backgrounds, different cultural backgrounds, different language backgrounds, different religious backgrounds, she understood the necessity of cultural engaging work. And I want to make sure that that's added to the compliments for her. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mertata. We'll move on to approval of minutes. Minutes from the regular meeting on September 23rd, 2024 have been distributed to members. Is there a motion to approve the member, the meeting, the minutes from the September 24th meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
The minutes have been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Biederman?
Approved.
Dr. Mertata?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Riolo?
Approved.
And Ms. Treble?
Approved. The motion carries. We'll move on to the Finance Committee report. The Finance Committee is chaired by Dr. Patricia Payne, with members Dr. Louise Palacio and Dr. Eugene White. Dr. Palacio is the lone member of the Finance Committee here tonight, so thank you for representing, and we'll ask you to lead us on the report.
Thank you. So I would like to call Alita Campbell and Mary Rankin to provide that report for the financials. They are the superstars. I have to say that.
Good evening. Mary Rankin and I will present the Treasury Report for the month of September 2024. I will review the revenue, and Mary, you go over the expenditure. So we're 75% into our budget year, and right now our revenue is at 61%. It appears to be unfavorable, however, this is the cadence of the revenue for the library. You know, I forgot to even push this, I'm sorry. Okay. So for the property taxes, for this month, we didn't receive any, however, the month of October, we're predicted to receive 1.8 million, and currently, when I looked this morning, we had 1.6 million. So we will probably, most likely be favorable in that area. The Intergovernmental Section, that is for our LOED and COED, and we received that for this month. And for the charges for services, public printing has been consistent, and we received 32,000. And then we had the revenue from the plaque card, and we received 55,000 for that. And that is from the statewide library card, that is the revenue that we receive from that once a year. And then for the miscellaneous section, our interest continue to, you know, rise. For the, for the month, we received 161,000, and for the year, we received 1.3 million. The Hoosier Fund is at 5.31%, and Trust Indiana is at 5.19%. And as you can see, that is slowly, you know, lowering. I think the FAS had stated that it's going to drop about a half a percent, and by the end of the year, probably be at 4%. So we kind of predicted that for this year anyway. And for our 2025 budget, we, we budgeted for a lower interest there as well. Within this miscellaneous account, we did receive $94,000 from the resolution for the simple... I get, I get five minutes? I'm sorry. Okay. It's okay. Okay, five more minutes. We did receive the simple right-of-way for the East Washington branch of 4,9,400. It was the resolution that Adam had, I think it was a month or two ago. So we received that revenue. And on this slide, maybe, we have our slope graph for the month of September. Again, you'll see it's a, started very low and a deep increase for the Intergovernmental Section, and then a lower for the fees, and as it gradually increases for the charges of services, which again is the interest. And then for the year-to-date revenue, it's just another way of looking at it, seeing that our 2024 revenue is close to what we predicted in our budget. Any questions for the revenue?
On expenditures, personal services and benefits are favorable and under budget. The supplies are consistent and under budget. Other services and charges are at budget, but we do have other invoices to process at month-end. Capital outlays consistent with last year, and overall, the total expenses are under 75% of the yearly budget, so it's favorable with total year-to-date of the budget spent of 66%. And then we also have the graph, the expenses for the month versus the prior year's month at this time, and the budget is the gray line. at this time, and the budget is the gray line. So you can see that personal services and benefits, which is our largest category, is under the budget for the year, and as well as all the other categories. And then that's also shown in a line chart on the right. Year-to-date shows, the yellow line is budget, and the blue line is 2024 year-to-date, so we're charting just right under year-to-date totals expected. Are there any questions on expenditures for the month of September?
We're going to ask if there's a motion for acceptance of the report of the treasurer for September 2024 for filing for audit.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion or any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Mertata?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Riolo?
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble?
Approved. The motion carries. You have Resolution 66-2024?
Yes, next on the agenda is Resolution 66-2024. This is the transfer between classifications of accounts. The total amount of the transfer is $103,000. $18,000, yeah, $18,000 coming from appointed salaries for CMSA. It's for a staff member who passed away, and that we're using the funds from the salary account and moving it down to our contractual account to pay for the service for until we're able to hire someone for that position. And then the second transfer is for $85,000 for IT, and that is to cover the expenses for computers and E-rate expenses from the IT department. We're expected to get the E-rate revenue in June of 2025, but we have to cover the expenses now. So that is a total of $103,000 to transfer. We are asking, we received a due pass. The reason we had to bring it to the board because it's coming from one character to the next character.
So Resolution 66-2024 regarding the transfer between classifications and accounts received a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation. A second. Is there any discussion? I thought there was one thing that we talked about, the E-rate reimbursement when we were talking about the, at our agenda review meeting. Just, I'd like you to tell the board, how long does it usually take to receive the reimbursement from, for E-rate from the federal government?
It does vary. It can take up from a year to two years to receive it, so, yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to share that. I was surprised that it was that long.
It depends on the expense, if it's a service or equipment or something like that, so...
Okay, thank you. If there's no further discussion, Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Mertata?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Riolo?
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble?
Approved. The motion carries. Back to you.
Thank you. For this next resolution, I'd like to call that. I'm sorry. Sorry to kick you out. This resolution's come out of CMSA.
Hello, Ms. Lambert.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk about Resolution 67-2024 regarding our reference service called Data Axel Reference Solutions. This is a renewal of a database that we've had for since, you know, for more than 10 years, and it's been staying at a flat rate of $58,000 and change since 2017. It's one of our popular databases used for business reference. It helps our small business community quite a bit, and it, we evaluate it every year, and it came in at 15 cents per retrieval this year. So that means that it's a very popular and well-used database, and so we're asking that you approve the renewal for it. This is one of the few databases that exceeds that $50,000 threshold that needs to come to the board.
Resolution 67-2024 regarding the Data Axel Reference Solutions Subscription Database Renewal has received a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Can you describe a little more what it does?
Sorry, can you read?
Can you describe a little more what it does?
Can I describe?
What's in the database?
Oh, sure. It's for doing research on businesses and particular subject areas in the community. We also have a module that adds on mapping of businesses, historical mapping of businesses in the area, so people can, if they want to develop a new business, they can see what other competing businesses are in the community and where a good location would be to put a new business. It also offers mailing lists for people who want to do flyers to, you know, members of the community that match their, you know, interest area, so it helps them build those lists of patrons, of customers, that they can get addresses from that. And there's also a whitelist, so people can look up personal phone numbers, so people use it for that, too, if they're looking for somebody in particular. Our librarians can help them find that, or they can use it themselves for remote access with their library card.
Any other questions? Okay, so Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Mertata?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Riolo?
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble?
Approved. The motion carries. Back to you.
Thank you.
Last is the updates. We received approval from the City County Council on October 7th for our 2025 budget. Yay. And then next is that we closed on our bond and received the funds for that on October 10th, so we received our bond fund for the 2024 bond.
Thank you. And just remind us what those bonds will be used for, just...
It's for capital projects, miscellaneous.
Okay.
Yes.
He'll be up here.
If anyone's gonna come up, it's me and Deb and Shanika.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
But he has the majority of it.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. We'll move on to the Diversity Policy and Human Resources Committee report. Mr. Raymond Beederman is the chair, and Dr. Palacio and Dr. Payne are members. Mr. Beederman?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce Ms. Galarse here today. I have some exciting resolutions, some of the best resolutions I've seen. Just great resolutions are going to be presented, so thank you. Some of the best. People have said they're the best.
I hope I'm the one that brings the good news. All right, so I'm here to receive approval for Resolution 68-2024. It is for the additional payment. So we have, as you heard, Mary saying that we have a balance on our benefits and personnel budget, so we would like to distribute that money as an additional payment for all our staff. The distribution that we're requesting is full-time, we'll receive 1,100; part-time, 600; and pages and hourly, 400. This is similar to what they received last year. So anybody on active status as of November 17th will receive the additional payment if approved on December 6th.
Thank you.
This came out of committee unanimously with the due pass recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Beederman. Resolution 68-2024 regarding the approval of additional payments to employees for year-end did receive a positive recommendation from the committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation. Second. Is there any discussion?
Thank you for exploring these opportunities and finding a way to do it. It's very good. Thank you to everybody across the organization for doing that. It's good stuff, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask Ms. Gilbert to please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Mertata?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Riolo?
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble?
Approved. The motion carries.
Thank you so much. So the second part, it is just a little bit of information that we presented on the DPHR Committee for the salary analysis for 2024 and 2025. So we analyzed some data from peer libraries' salaries and from the Good Wage Initiative guideline. So the goals for the last quarter of 2024 are the following: the Good Wage Initiative, the pay position new minimum, market rate compression, and pay scale expansion. So we talked about that the Good Wage Initiative, we want to move the minimum to, those are the new minimum. For the page position, we are going to move, or we would like to move, from 15 to 16 as a new minimum. And then for the goal number three, this is for 2025, we analyzed the peer libraries, and then we determined that the pay grade one is above market, pay grade two to six are above market. However, pay grades from seven to 15 are below market, and pay grades from 16 to 20 are at market. So the goal number four is compression, so the compression, it will be caused because of the new minimum, so we'll be putting people that are new hires closer to people that have been here for a few years. And so also with the new increases, if we don't expand the pay scale, then people will not be able to receive increases unless we expand the pay scale. So the conclusion is that we recognize that there is going to be compression, and then we also recognize that pay grade seven to 15 need to be revised to get back to market. So we are going to continue reviewing all the data, and we will hope that the following resolution will address one of the issues, and then on the next board meeting, we will have the annual resolution, which will address the compression and the market rate. Any questions for this one?
Could you just go back?
Sure.
Okay. Got it.
Okay. Any questions?
Okay. So, and this resolution received a positive, I mean, a positive...
Now I'm gonna...
Oh, okay, so you haven't.
So Resolution 69-2024, it is for the Good Wage Initiative, increase the minimum from the pay grades one to six. So the proposed is the following: pay grade one to 16, pay grade two and three for 18, pay grade four 1830, pay grade five 1850, and pay grade six 1870. So anyone making less than this amount in the following pay grades will be moved to the new pay, the new minimum.
Okay. Ready? And so this, this resolution did receive a positive recommendation from the committee, so I will request a second. Second. Is there any discussion?
Yep, just a comment. I know that this is just one phase of multi-phase plan to address pay disparities and the like in the system, and I commend you guys on your work for exploring all those options, bringing something to the table as fast as we could to try to get something done this year, so that next year we can address some of these other issues that have been present for a long time. So I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into that for us to get to this point and be able to do it this year in this budget and even have an extra pay. So I think a lot of, a lot of hard work and number crunching went into that, so really appreciate that work.
Mr. Hill?
I just want to echo what Mr. Beederman said. I want to say specifically a thank you to Ms. Tisha Galarse and Ms. Lolita Campbell for the hard work, and the executive leadership team for coming up with the goals and working really hard to try to make this happen for everybody, so thank you.
Dr. Riolo? Did you? Oh, okay. Dr. Palacio?
So I also want to echo everybody else and thank the team for advancing this today, making it a reality today. I know we started talking about this a year ago, maybe a little more than a year ago. I remember going to one of the awards, Mayor Award in Diversity, and there was a Good Wages Initiative award and that kind of stuff, and I remember having a conversation with the team, and especially Lolita, and Lolita saying, "We'll achieve this." So it's been a good journey, I think. I'd like to hear that there's a lot more progress than we anticipated, so thanks, everybody, Greg, and everybody else in the team for achieving this much. I know compression is an issue now, and I know there's a lot of people benefit from this. For me, the big push has been, how can we bring people who are below the new minimum up to this minimum so that we can address some of the inflationary issues that we've been seeing? So, yeah, thanks for accomplishing this much and the plan forward.
Any other comments? Any further discussion? I'll just add my thanks. Everyone has expressed so well and acknowledged the work and the cooperation and collaboration that is required, so thank you. It is good news. Resolution 69-2024 regarding the Good Wages Initiative increased for pay grades one through six received a positive recommendation from the DPHR Committee. Dr. Palacio?
I just, I don't want to leave Tisha out of this, and thanks for keeping me informed and coaching me about all the compression issues.
So the chair will request a second. Oh, we already did that, right? We're ready for the...
We finished discussion.
For the vote, I'm sorry.
The discussion part's over.
Dr. Palacio reset me, I'm sorry.
We could discuss again if you want.
We could go like Groundhog Day. Okay, Ms. Gilbert, we're ready. Please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Mertata?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Riolo?
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble?
Approved. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Galarse. Great work. This is good news. Very good news. We'll move on to the Facilities Committee report. The Facilities Committee is chaired by Dr. Eugene White, and members, and its members are Dr. Mertata, Dr. Colleen Mertata, and Dr. Lisa Riolo. In Dr. White's absence, Ms., Dr. Mertata is delivering the report.
And I'll ask Adam Parsons to come on up.
Welcome, Mr. Parsons. All that new bond money.
Citizens of Marion County have bond money.
Good response.
All right. I have four resolutions on the schedule, but slight change of the schedule. The first one for the conference center in LSC 221 needs to be postponed. We're still working through some XPE verification for the vendors, so we're going to skip over all of that.
The chair would receive a motion to amend the agenda by removing Resolution 70-2024 from tonight's agenda.
So before we do that, should we remove it or table it so we don't have to renumber everything? Yeah, good point. All right. So I move to table 70-2021 until a future meeting.
Okay. So is there a second to the motion?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there, is there any discussion? Hearing none?
What is the new timeline?
We aim to have it for the November board meeting.
Any other... Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Dr. Matata.
Approve.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Riolo.
Approve.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved. The motion carries. Back to you, Mr. Parsons.
All right, next resolution is Resolution 71-2024, approval of First Amendment to Agreement and Declaration of Easements with the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority. There we go. All right, so the Fort Bend branch was recently opened last year. There is a parcel immediately west that's currently being developed into a mixed-use retail and apartment area. The parcel immediately east is currently a grass lot, and the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority has come to an agreement with a developer to develop a mixed-use retail development. Between the Fort Bend branch lot and the lot immediately to the east is an easement, splitting those two lots currently. NDPL is 100% owner and 100% responsible for maintenance of that easement. This amendment would break that, would allow the developers' customers to drive upon that easement, but they would also bear the maintenance costs 50/50 with NDPL.
Came out of committee, and we recommended a due pass.
And the only other thing would be that NDPL is responsible for snow and ice removal. We would prefer that to make sure that our patrons are allowed access through our vendors. Once the contract is finalized, cost sharing will begin upon occupation of the lot, so that would probably be substantial completion of the construction.
Resolution 71, 2024 has been recommended for approval by the Facilities Committee, so the Chair would entertain a second.
Second.
Okay, motion's been seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. So this would end up being revenue, so would it be under like miscellaneous revenue in the budget?
It would be reimbursement. I don't know how finance would classify it, but we would incur the expense and then give the receipts to the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority, and they would reimburse us 50%.
Got it, great.
Yes, Dr. Palacio?
Is there a financial impact after the new easement is developed? Or the easement is developed?
There shouldn't be, in theory. In reality, there may be, in reality compared to the current state, there may be an increase of maintenance costs due to an increase of traffic, but in reality, as composed as compared to the proposed state in five years or so, we always expected that lot to be developed. And so we were anticipating this, and it's approximately the same expected costs, given that development occurring. So if anything, we have been incurring lower maintenance costs, or would have been lower, incurring lower maintenance costs than expected due to the lack of development of that lot, and now this development is just meeting our expectations.
And splitting that will reduce our cost?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, but it was expected to reduce the cost. We would not allow use of the easement without a cost-sharing agreement. So there was always that trade that was going to happen.
Okay.
And when do you expect occupant, occupation to take place, the timing of that?
I expect sometime in the next, in approximately 18 months. They haven't even broken ground. They finalized the contract, but not mobilized for construction.
Great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Dr. Matata.
Approve.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Riolo.
Approve.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved. The motion carries. Move on to Resolution 72, 2024.
All right, this is approval of First Amendment to the construction manager's construction agreement, constructor agreement between Skilman Corporation and NDPL for safety and acoustic improvements at the Fort Bend branch. So, for a bit of background, the Fort Bend branch was built by Skilman Corporation, who acted as the construction manager as constructor. This term has been brought up, just as a quick review, construction manager as constructor or construction manager at risk, those are both equivalent terms. I apologize if they are legally different, but I use them equivalently. We have recently been, NDPL has recently, within the past five years, been using that model as the construction manager as constructor, CMC, bears significantly more liability and responsibility for the construction process, as opposed to a general contractor model in which NDPL bears significant financial and legal responsibility. And so, Skilman Corporation built Fort Bend, built it well, built it on time, built it under budget, and we are requesting approval to extend that CMC contract, excuse me, for the acoustic and safety concerns. So there was no vendor outreach, no purchasing, this is simply an extension of the existing contract. The estimated impacts for this particular contract are just on, or just around $45,000. So just over $5,000 for pre-construction, mobilization, design, about $40,000 for, to manage the construction during the construction phase. Total estimated construction costs for the project are, is approximately $600,000. So this contract is estimated to be approximately $45,000. The vendor is not a city-certified XPE, and they will self-perform 100% of that construction management work. Use of the construction manager as constructor process does allow for enhanced bidding. Going through this process, the CMC has more extensive contacts with vendors, subcontractors. So if we contract with Skilman as the CMC, we should be able to have enhanced XPE utilization of the subcontractors for the 550,000 or $600,000 construction process. So, but for this particular contract, it would be only Skilman with 0% XPE utilization for $45,000. And just as a reference, I don't have all of our departments for Q3, but through Q3, the facilities or operational services department is currently at a 30.52% XPE spend. So were this to be approved at this board meeting? We would execute the contract, issue the invitations to quote for Phase One, which is the acoustic abatement in the front entryway and of the main, the main library area, receive quotes in December, approve those quotes in December for mobilization in December. Construction to start in earnest in January and substantial completion done in March. And that is for the acoustic treatment, which we, there are photos of this in the next couple of slides. Phase Two is the construction around and containing the children's activity area. That would be bidding in January, approval in February. The construction would start after the summer reading program in 2025, construction to end in November of 2025. So all of this is anticipatory pursuant upon approval of this contract for the CMC. So here are the renderings. Here's a bird's eye view of the children's area, and the lower right-hand corner would be the active children's area that we are enclosing. Multiple glass walls, so it isn't just behind a blocked, you know, an opaque surface. There'll be a slight rearrangement of the, of the collection as well. This is a view from the reference area, reference desk, so you can see glass walls. This is another view of, from the window seats inside. So this is a view looking out of the children's area. These are some of the acoustic treatments that would be high up on the walls, specifically on the north wall of the building. This is just a color study to mix and match and see what would work best. But this is the, part of the acoustic abatement that would be completed by March of 2025. And that's it for that resolution.
The committee had extensive conversations and discussions about the phases of this work, and we recommend that it come out of committee for a due pass.
Thank you. So is there a second to the recommendation for Resolution 72, 2024, approval to execute the First Amendment to the construction manager as constructor agreement between the Skilman Corporation and the Indianapolis Marion County Public Library for safety and acoustic improvements at the Fort Bend Branch Library?
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Are there any, is there any discussion? Or Dr. Palacio?
Thanks for the resolution and the work and the discussion. I have a few questions. How much was the savings? You said the original project came under budget. What was the amount of savings?
Approximately $900 to $950,000.
So we're using that money to do this phase?
Yes.
And then? We have a recommendation to use the same contract, construction manager?
Yes.
Will there be any demolition or only installation, minor demolition?
Very minor, what would actually be classified as demolition, because some small bulkheads might need to be removed, but it's almost exclusively construction, active additive construction.
Any issue or with the air quality during that process?
There shouldn't be. We're actually paying quite a bit of close attention to the process that we're using at the curve, and we'll mimic that, making sure that the areas are sealed off, using HEPA filters, using glue mats on the floor, several other processes.
Was the policy on monitoring the air quality?
The policy right now is performing the enhanced filtration and enhanced air quality actions. We don't have an active, regular air quality test with, say, for example, August Mack, who we normally use for our air quality tests. We basically use observation, so if there are, if there is particulate matter that we can visually see, if people are telling us that they are having irritation due to the air quality, then we'll run the test, but it's preventive plus observation and not testing on a regular basis.
Okay, my recommendation is that we have continuous air quality monitoring in those, those projects, maybe a $100 monitor or something like that?
Sure.
Since we're going back to improvements, any conversation on the drive-through dropbox, racing that floor for the cars to be able to drop their books comfortably?
No, honestly, we looked, and remember, we had this conversation, we, we went back and measured it and found that it was installed within the manufacturer's specifications, and so it has been designed for the 95% to 98%, I would say. Yes, I drive, one of my cars is a Subaru Impreza, so it's a compact hatchback, and even I have to reach, and I'm 6'1". So unfortunately, some vehicles do have to reach. We've looked at it, and honestly, given the perforations, it would be cost ineffective to install a second one, but we can ultimately take a look at it.
Racing the floor, so the car is a little higher, not so much changing the dropbox.
Right. We can take a look at that.
Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Beederman?
So are we getting some sort of guarantee that it's going to fix the problem if we spend the money? What we've done is we've had an acoustic test, and we can look to see, that was part of the discussion that we had in the Facilities Committee, about what the key word in that discussion was accountability, what accountability looks like legally. And we can have a further discussion about that. Okay. And then what, what color, what color did you guys go with? I'm an engineer, I'm color agnostic.
What we did was we didn't have a rigorous debate about the necessary changes for the acoustics, but we didn't get into a discussion about the color.
Well, probably we'll go with blue and yellow and red. Thank you so very much for raising the question.
I don't even see blue up there, and I was, they look exactly the same to me. I don't know if this is a test of like finding the difference, but they look the same. Are they? Say that again?
Oh, yes, there it is. All right. I filmed the text.
I'll talk up line. Okay, well, my question was about the timeline and the gap between Phase One and Phase Two, and it's kind of obvious to me, but would you just mention why we're going to be waiting from, the board will approve in February, but the work will start in August?
So I go back to the schedule. So, excuse me, if we were to, the way that we wanted to do this was we wanted to have the acoustic abatement, specifically the north wall and the entryway, completed first, because that is the quote-unquote low-hanging fruit. And so that would go until March, and we would need to do the paperwork and the processes for that first as part of the overall project. That would push us to January for bidding, and if we were to start at January and we wouldn't get approved for bidding until February, that would be pushing it right up to or even into the summer reading program. And so we decided that it would be better to have a multi-month delay or postponement of the construction to isolate summer reading program from any disruptions.
And then just to Mr. Beederman's question, I know you said you were going to look into some kind of guarantee, but what does that mean? Does it, are you intending to put some kind of performance measures in the contract that would give that?
I'm going to defer to counsel on what performance measures and accountability are allowed, because the, the overall question is, yes, there are, the contract, having a contract in general is an accountability document. We have said we want X product, and if you don't deliver it, we have Y reactions to that. What specific items would be included in that as far as, I'm sorry, I forget the term, the phrase that you used. Performance, yes. So is it, you know, is there a benefit to achieving this and going above and beyond or achieving? Is there a punishment if you don't achieve? You know, defining those type of prescriptive reactions or prescriptive responses is very difficult. And so that's why we're going to take a look at what would be appropriate, what would be acceptable, because, you know, whether we like it or not, the vendor needs to approve of this contract. Because, you know, whether we like it or not, the vendor needs to approve of this contract as well. And so we need to make it amenable to both sides. So, yeah, I don't know if you would like to add anything.
My question on that is, we're already, even though we underspent, we're already extending the cost for this branch, another $600,000. And so I think going back to address an issue that didn't come into play, really, it came into play once the library was fully operational, right? So maybe one of the things to consider is some kind of period of actual full use where you can get feedback from our patrons and our staff again to make sure that we've actually cured the issue. That's just my thought. And of course, I'm not an attorney. But I do think, you know, we're doing it again. We need to do it again. And I agree that we need some more assurance about it. So I would just make that suggestion in that you consult with counsel about it.
And we did, we did discuss it at length. You're right, Madam Chair. This, this was discussed at length, and how will we make sure that we have this kind of check, if you will, to make sure that we move forward with it? Because even the cost was discussed at length, and Adam assured the committee that we were moving forward in the best possible way to make sure that we don't just do this as a haphazard way.
And I trust that. I know, like, when I bought a brand, my first house was a new house. And after it was built, the builder came back after three months for a punch list, and they came back after six months for a punch list because the house had then been in use. And there were things that I might have discovered during that interim that may not have been evident at the time that I occupied it. So that's just one suggestion I have. Dr. Palacio?
So my suggestion would be on more of a guarantee than, and that could be an accountability. But, and my understanding is that the staff, this came out of the staff and the, and the branch manager as a request that, right?
Fort Ben Branch staff, yes.
So the feedback, I think, was to noise abatement and all that, right? But there's a way to measure that. So what's the target change for decibels? Because that's something we can easily measure, and that's something that could be easily engineered with all the models and the physics. So I think that's a simplistic, and I like simplicity, way of accounting. You can measure before and after test. If there's panels that are missing or relocation of things, I think that's something that could be agreeable on the other side as a kind of a comeback and maybe reconfigure a few things. What was the target? What's the, what are we aiming for? What's the change? What are the current decibel levels? And what are we trying to, what's the new target?
We measured, I want to say, 13 different locations within the building, and I don't have the, the readings memorized.
Is there a percentage that you're looking for reducing?
No, because they were vastly different. So some were low, some were high, and so the percentages would be different. We are looking for, to reach a certain threshold, and I honestly forget what that is, but I can get you the reports.
Is that something that we can go back to Skilman and ask, okay, this is what we're, this is the target? And if you miss it, there's a clause there that says, well, this is the target, right?
Yeah.
Until completion?
Yes. The one thing that I would adjust in that is whether or not Skilman would be the right person to go back to. Because the reason that they, that we have this money is because they built everything to design as designed by the architect. And so you have the question of, do we go back to Skilman and say, well, you built it to spec, but we have an issue? Or we go back to the designer and saying, it's actually the implementation of your design that's at fault? And so that's part of the looking into exactly which contract. So we've already gone through the design process, and we can double-check on the, on the design contract. And to be honest, the design was under $50,000. And so there, there's really just a PO for the design for this. There was no official contract that needed to be board-approved. So, but we can go back and make sure that the acoustic levels are in there, and then we can look at what potential redress is available.
Maybe you're right. Looking at the design, but, or is the design based on a set of installations, architectural or whatnot? Or is it a set of parameters and specs that are very like hard numbers?
It's based on the acoustic analysis, and so they're using best practices and what they think will ultimately reduce the decibels to an appropriate level. So, yeah, they're using that analysis as their baseline.
Thanks.
I believe that the space is being used differently as well now compared to the way it was designed. It was, it had some assumptions about how it was going to be used, and then the pandemic happened, and it's being used differently, different amount of traffic.
The, the community room is seeing substantially higher use by larger groups than expected because it's one of the best and largest and free community rooms in the area. And so, you know, the frequency of having a group in there and the duration of sound emanating from the community room and, excuse me, reverberating through the entryway is, has a higher, has not noise volume, but frequency volume than anticipated. And so that, that is part of it. We've also seen that the children's area is, is experiencing the same increase in volume of patron use. You know, Fort Ben, similar to Glendale, has been consistently adding new cardholders at a high level for months and months, even after opening. And they're both very popular branches. And so that was, that was part of it, too. The other aspect is that this isn't just solely acoustic. This is safety as well. Due to the high levels of patron use, specifically in the younger children's, excuse me, active children's area, staff requested some form of partition or separation of the children's area to allow parents and staff to have just that little extra reaction time should a child move from one area to the next. There's also some, some other factors in that with safety. But that's, that's the second half of this as well. So there's safety and there's acoustics.
And then on page six of your board packet, the colors are a little bit more clear. They still are subtle, but yellow is yellow and green is green, more so than on the screen. I vote white.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
So we're just approving, moving forward to spend the money? Like, we don't have, we're not, we don't have contracts yet.
This is the First Amendment to the existing CMC contract we have with Skilman. That existing contract is that same contract we used to hire them to build Fort Ben. That is still legally in effect.
It's just the money?
The amendment is to extend that to include the scope of this construction and at an estimated cost of approximately $45,000.
So then how would we put the performance metrics in there? And we'd have to have an amendment to the contract then as well, other than just this. I mean, I know you talked to us about that amendment process or looking at stuff, but if we approve this today, isn't, when does that part come into play?
Correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not a lawyer. I believe you may be right that that would be a Second Amendment to put that in there? Or would that just be a contract modification for scope? How would that work?
The contract is at this point, which I haven't seen the contract. So you're, you're amending to extend it. But obviously, there's a new scope of work and just haven't seen the scope, I haven't seen the scope of work description.
And like, what does it allow for holdback? You know, for us to say, like, right, substantial completion is saying that we're done, and we can say, yeah, we're, we're not done because it's not meeting these metrics. And so, you know, we can hold back, you know, the profit element or?
I think we use 10% as our standard holdback.
It's in the agreement?
It's not included in the agreement at this time.
I'm sorry?
That's just the amendment.
That's just the amendment, yeah.
Yeah, that is.
And so, and I'm sorry, I'm getting multiple conversations from multiple angles. So 15, you thought 15%? Okay. Yes, so, yeah, so 15%.
Is it, is a punchless item or something we can retain for related to the abatement levels? And if not, can we add that?
I'm sure that we can.
And should we add that before we pass this?
I'm going to defer to legal on that one if.
I mean, if we're, what's up for, on the table right now is to approve an amended agreement with a scope.
Right.
Then I think Ray's comments are well taken.
And I'll say you had, counsel hasn't seen it.
I'm not aware of counsel having reviewed it, but.
I, I believe either Russell or.
Will.
Will, thank you. I knew it was a W. Either Russell or Will has reviewed it.
The other question that I have, Adam, is you mentioned you weren't sure that if there was dissatisfaction with the work or we didn't feel it was complete, you wouldn't know with which party we have recourse, whether it's Skilman or someone else. I would, I think we should clarify that, too, unless I misunderstood you, to be clear about who we would need to go back, who is going to be responsible.
That, I guess I was referencing more of a philosophical and legal question because if we say, hey, we have a complaint with the performance of our building, and we said, we go to Skilman, Skilman's going to say, go to the designer. We go to the designer, they'll say, go to Skilman. So there will be those, those three-way conversations about responsibility. Now, we may claim one thing, but the vendor or vendors may and probably will claim something else. And so I was referencing that those arguments or discussions will be had, the outcome of which I don't know.
Okay. So why not clarify that in the contract process?
Well, you can't really. You can't really because you have to, it's fact-sensitive. But you, we would just sue everybody. We'd sue everybody under the sun and then make them figure it out.
I'll defer to counsel on that one.
But, yeah, that's neither here nor there. But I think, I think we do need some clarification on like what the goal is, right?
Yeah, I think there's, if I'm understanding things correctly, there's really two different questions. One is the question about what's already happened. In other words, there was a design, Skilman built, and apparently there's some issues. So about what's already happened. And then the issue about going forward with an amended extension on the Skilman contract and that whole process. If that makes sense?
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense. I'm just worried that, you know, we said, oh, there's nothing we can do. We got to spend $600,000 more. And then we're going to use the same agreement that we said there's nothing we can do to do it again, right? And so if, if we have an opportunity here to add in a qualification of, you know, release of the holdback or, or, you know, retention amount, you know, on a decibel level change overall or whatever we want it to be, this is the time to do it rather than come, come back and do it again.
Sure.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I was wondering if this is something. Back to if it's something that is upon Skilman or the designer? Because if we approve the extension for Skilman, could Skilman then put this goal on the designer?
I'll defer to legal on that one. I mean, I'm not being coy about this. I'm not a lawyer, so I really don't know what their legal recourse would be, nor do I work for Skilman.
But wouldn't they?
I don't know.
Hire the designer?
What's that?
They don't hire the designer?
No, we hire the designer. They design.
But that's a different contract.
And then we hire a CMC and they build.
So is it, is it crazy to maybe, maybe table this?
No, it's not actually. I was gonna, well, first we have to.
What I was trying to say is, is, is this contract where we need to put this goal? Or is it on the designer contract, which may be a different contract? Oh, that's gone. That's out. Okay.
What's out?
The opportunity.
It's done with the architect. There's no ongoing.
Yeah, the, the original contract with the designer of the entire building, that contract is now complete because that contract, that, that design was delivered years ago. And the design for the acoustic and safety project, that was under $50,000, so that was a PO. Now, that does include a scope of work. We don't just say, hey, here's 50 grand and give us some pretty pictures. So that does include a scope. But I will have to double-check to see if the actual noise reduction was prescribed in there, to see if, what recourse is possible through that particular PO agreement.
So, Adam, would it be possible, like, at the next committee meeting? To have Skilman at the meeting to answer some of these questions? Because putting you on the spot in all this isn't fair to you because you're, you're having to guess and interpret and all that stuff, and that's not fair to you. So is it possible to have them come to the next committee meeting and answer some questions?
Yeah, yeah, we can ask them to, to be there. Yeah, sure.
Okay. I, I think that would be helpful.
I would agree.
And make, make people feel good and all that. I mean, it, you know.
These are some of the issues that we raised.
Yep.
And I wondered if the process, I don't know what process it is for tabling this rather than making a vote.
The chair will receive a motion. You know, we're at discussion prior to the roll call. I will entertain a motion to table 72 2024.
I make a motion to do so.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to table Resolution 72 2024 regarding the amendment of the construct, Construction Manager as constructor agreement with Skilman Corporation for improvements at the Fort Ben Branch. Is there, Dr. Palacio?
How would, how would this tabling of this affect the timelines? Any effect on the timelines that you described?
Yes.
What would that effect be?
I'm trying to get the schedule up, but I don't know what happened. There we go.
It's got six minutes between.
There we go. So we were planning to issue the invitations to quote in about 17 days, and so that won't happen. Substantial completion of the acoustic abatement will probably happen in April or May of 2025, given that we're starting, we will end up starting issuing this. We'll probably, won't issue it in December because no one will reply in the holiday season. So we'll probably issue it in January, pushing that out to May. But that will be done by summer reading program. Pushing this back, since there is a little bit of leeway in there with starting material procurement, it might push it, we'll still keep the August, possibly September, and so we'll be done by the end of next year with construction.
Any further questions?
Could we also charge counsel, whomever will be at the committee meeting, to review the contracts prior to it? So we have better understanding?
Sure. Absolutely. Any further discussion?
Can I make an amendment upon that? Certain counsel has reviewed the contracts. Can we charge them to make sure that those who have reviewed are present? I know Mr. Maxwell is subbing in, and so he's at a loss, but we can make sure that schedules work or?
We have, for what it's worth, we have started an internal discussion about the topic that was brought up at the Facilities Committee meeting. Although I would say it was primarily focused internally at the firm with the question of what's already happened. But certainly, we can continue with this, the two sets of questions.
And I think also for our team to also understand some of those repercussions. And I think also for our team to also understand some of those repercussions, so that conversation between attorney and client could also happen prior to, uh, this being brought back to the board and/or committee. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved, so, uh, Resolution 72-2024 is, uh, tabled until, uh, it's resent to the board by the facilities committee.
All right, Resolution 73-2024 is approval to award a purchase order for the Central Library Two East Circulation Desk Furniture Project. So, Two East is, uh, the first phase of the Curve renovation, which is the entire renovation of floors two and three at Central Library. Furniture is needed upon reopening, as this will be done in phases. And we already have actually issued the invitation to bid for all of the other furniture in Two East, and we will receive bids on that. However, um, after discussions with the manufacturer, the lead time for the circulation desk was much longer than anticipated. And so we would like to, um, issue a PO for that. This will be under special purchasing agreement per five dash twenty-two dash ten dash thirteen, single source, and five dash twenty-two dash ten dash twelve, government discount. Office Works is the sole manufacturer's representative in our area for this particular brand of circulation desk, and we would like to purchase directly from them. The total cost is just over $68,000, and it's funded via the Curve Project Bond Fund, which is Bond Fund 487. No, I do have more. Office Works is an MBE, and they will provide that, that is a reference for Q3. So, um, with the longer lead time, it will still be scheduled to be delivered before the reopening of Two East in Q1 of next year.
This Resolution 73-2024 received, uh, approval by the committee, and it's recommending a due pass to the committee. We fully supported it.
Okay, hearing recommendation from the facilities committee to approve Resolution 73-2024 for approval of an award to purchase, uh, to award a purchase order for Central Library Two East Circulation Desk Furniture Project. I will, uh, entertain a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
And Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved, the motion carries.
And that finishes my resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, and thank you for all that you continue to do. And I know that, uh, um, I haven't had, uh, I had business line college. It's been a long time ago, but I do think some of those questions that you have, um, we should definitely have clarity on. And I also think, since we're doing a redo with regard to that, we'll be, we'll be doing well to cross our Ts and dot our Is. So I do appreciate your going back once again, um, and, uh, bringing more information for that earlier, um, the earlier resolution.
As far as scheduling goes, would you like this at the next facilities committee? Is that what I'm hearing?
I think we want it when, when it's ready. That's what I would suggest.
Okay.
When it's ready, when you have all of your answers and we're clear about who's on first.
I think, I think Dr. Palacio also brought up the air quality test, which should be a mi, a minimal thing, but of worth to note.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to, uh, the next agenda item, which is the Library Foundation update. Mr. Beederman?
Uh, yeah, so, um, Library Foundation gives an update every month. Very thankful for all the support we received. Um, Library Foundation was proud to support many programs, including alphabet art, uh, fish friends, uh, baby arts play, bilingual storytime, and parachute pop. So very exciting, very exciting. Um, thank you to the library staff for providing high-quality learning experiences for our city's youngest children. Uh, we had, uh, 92 donors last month, thank you very much. They include American Honda Motor Company, Inc., Central Indiana Community Foundation, Comcast, the Indiana Farm Bureau Insurance, Indiana Humanities, and Live Nation Worldwide, Inc. This month, the foundation gave more than $100,000 to the library, including for, uh, Fall Fest Slamming Rhymes Challenge, uh, 18. And then the Lillian Childress Hall Scholarships and other branch initiatives. Uh, that concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Beederman. We'll move on to item number 10, Report of the CEO, Mr. Hill.
All right, thank you, uh, for President, trustees. Uh, good evening. Uh, for my b, board report, it will cover real quickly, uh, selected branch programs, system-wide stats. Uh, it'll have a partnership highlight, our Star Award winners, Biblio Commons Report, staff training opportunities, and upcoming programs. Uh, adult program highlights, uh, Hallville, they hosted 15. I'm sorry, I was just following what was on my, I apologize.
Oh.
Okay, before you, is the monthly confirmatory resolution, uh, 74-2024 related to financial travel and personal matters that occurs between each board meeting. It's in its typical format, and I ask for your approval of Resolution 74-2024.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 74-2024 regarding finances, personnel, and travel?
Is that moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's, the motion has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved, the motion carries. Now to you, Mr. Hill, for your CEO report.
Okay, thank you, I apologize. Um, so I'm gonna talk about adult program highlights. Of course, we do many adult programs. This is just a sampling of some of the programs. The full report is in your board packet. Hallville, they hosted 15 employers and 120 job seekers at their Near West Job Fair, which was held on September the 4th. The Career Center ran concurrently. They helped patrons with resumes and job applications. Um, the first of two three artists in residence workshops in partnership with the Autodory Museum took place there as well with, uh, American Indian and Western Art. Ephraim Anderson taught guests how to create their own works to take home. And artist Glenda McKay spoke about her craft, uh, making using traditional cultural items, indigenous material, using indigenous material. The Central Library, um, they had the Small Business Series. The series is designed to help people who are starting a new business, a small business navigate legal, accounting, and intellectual property and marketing concerns. And 2024, the number of sessions was expanded from six to 10, and the total attendance was 369 participants, which was a 92% increase, uh, from last year. Uh, Warren hosted a community fair in partnership with the Library Social Services Action Committee and numerous community partners. Um, let's see, this event featured local providers supporting our patrons with healthcare, mental health, substance use recovery support, employment, housing, and teen youth guidance. Some of the participants, uh, our partners included the Warren Township Trustees, Far East Neighborhood Advocates, Goodwill Nurse Family Partnership, the Jane Pauli Health Center, Pathway Resources Center, Brook Place for Grieving Young People, Indianapolis East Rotary, uh, Eskenazi Health Center, Grassy Creek, and the Drug-Free Marion County. They had about 89 participants who came through for the program. Juvenile Program Highlights, the Children's Museum, uh, Heron Prep Academy. Uh, they had a kindergarten class who learned the library's rules this month, or in September, by solving a mystery. The first grade and second grade class talked about being shy while reading Crunch, The Shy Dinosaur. And then the third, fourth, and fifth grade classes explored their readers' identities by creating a picture based on their reading preferences. Spade Park had Dan's Kaleidoscope, which was a collaborative storytime with the partner. Uh, one of the librarians read a story to the kids entitled Giraffes Can Dance, and then participants were taught an animal-themed creative movement class. East 38th Street and Franklin Road had Talk Like a Pirate Day. On September 19th, many stra, many staff dressed as pirates, which the community thoroughly enjoyed, and staff took time to tell pirate jokes. Franklin Road, Franklin Road did the same thing as well. Uh, librarian April Peachey designed, uh, Franklin Road Scavenger Hunt for Talk Like a Pirate Day. Throughout the month, over 100 children and their families enjoyed searching the branch for clues to find the pirate's favorite subject in school. And then lastly, uh, West Perry, they hosted the Girl Scouts, uh, who come out and help improve the branch's native plant garden. Uh, they created a sign for the space to help remove excess mulch and painted and watered new plants. Uh, library programs across the system for the month of September. We had 465 youth programs, which include teens, school-aged infants. We had 9,281 participants. And for the adult programs, we had 301, which includes adults and seniors. That was 3,740. Uh, just thinking about the previous month in August, which was the last month of the summer reading program, we had 210 programs. And I would assume the reason for the increases in programs because for summer reading, we just pretty much focus on summer reading, and there's less programming. And then the following month, we picked up on the programming. Uh, I just wanna do a quick partner highlight, Step Up. Step Up, a local nonprofit whose mission is to provide comprehensive care for wellness with dignity and inclusivity, has been providing free HIV, syphilis, and hepatitis C testing at the following branches since 2023. Central, East Washington, Garfield Park, Hallville, Martin Dale Brightwood, and West Indianapolis. I want to extend a thank you to those branches, uh, for being a, a great partner with Step Up. Also, in addition to testing services, Step Up links clients into care coordination services offered by the agency. This partnership has been critical in increasing our reach, uh, for preventative and support services with hard-to-reach marginalized communities. In 2024, uh, they were able to test individuals, uh, for infectious diseases who otherwise would have limited access to these services. And the, the numbers in the full, uh, also report is in, in your board report. And I just wanna say thank you to Connor Tiffany, who is the Director of Outreach and Prevention, for, uh, his help. In October last week, we held our third-quarter reception for all of our third-quarter Star Award winners. Uh, I will go through the September Award winners here quickly. Uh, patron services was Brittany Burris from Lawrence. Peer support is Timothy Volmer from Nora. Community involvement was Keisha McIntyre from Communications Department. And team excellence was the ad hoc request for consideration committee, who, uh, comes together and takes care of any requests that we have for, uh, material. So thank you, Deb, for your group for doing that. Uh, the rest, uh, Cinder Patel, Page Excellence. Other duties assigned is Melissa Carey from West Perry. Volunteers in partnership is Brian Roberts from Rico. And committee's choice was Randy Ayers from Fort Ben. And the committee's choice, Makia Smith from Fort Ben. Uh, so we can give them a round of applause. Uh, thank you for everybody who showed up. Thank you for the ELT team who also joins in our, uh, receptions and get a chance to talk to staff. So thank you so much for that. Uh, the next thing here, real quickly, is the Biblio Commons. I did talk about this in May. So Biblio Commons is a discovery layer that revolutionizes the online library experience for our patrons. Unlike traditional online repositories, uh, this discovery layer offers a dynamic and engaging platform that goes beyond mere collection access. Uh, it saves time by automating the presentation of new titles, awards, bestsellers, and ensures that online library visitors have a fulfilling experience, uh, just like they would if they were to come into a physical location. By transforming our online category into a hub of discovery and engagement, we drive increased interaction and satisfaction among our patrons. And just a couple of quick notes here. For quarter one, we had a 71% increase from 2023 to 2024. Uh, quarter two was a 65% increase, and in quarter three was a 9% increase. Our total so far is a 37% increase, uh, and that's only through three quarters. So, um, we should have, we'll, we'll have more users than we had in the previous year as well. So that's, uh, Biblio Commons. Staff opportunities, uh, we had some staff that attended, that attended the Difference in Youth Conference. We had 14 staff that attended that. Uh, psychological safety training, we had 10 staff that attended psychological, psychological safety training. And then the Association for Library Service to Children, there were three staff members who attended that. And then, uh, also, this would actually be on next month's report, but I'll just mention it briefly. There was the Association of Bookmobile and Outreach Services Conference that was held last week. And I, I gave opening remarks for that, and there were about 500 people in attendance for that. And we had staff who attended that as well.
Uh, Mr. Hill, what is the Difference's Youth Conference?
Uh, can someone help me with that? Anybody out there, anybody, any ELT members?
So, President, Youth Conference is a paraprofessional conference offered by the state library.
Thank you.
All right. And then upcoming programs, we have the, uh, Community Resource Fair. Uh, this free and open to the public event brings together community members from all backgrounds to receive support with medical screenings, mental health, housing, employment, substance abuse recovery, teen and youth needs, and that will be at the Central Library. I think this is our third year for that. So we're looking forward to that. Fall Fest will be, um, Saturday, November the 16th. The Indianapolis Public Library's African-American History Committee, in support of the Center for Black Literature and Culture, presents Fall Fest 2024 Slammin' Rhymes Challenge. And then last but not least is the Holiday Concert. Individuals of all ages are invited to the classical concert, uh, at the library. Enjoy the strings and the friends as they play you around the world and wrap up with a few familiar holiday tunes. And we've been doing that for, uh, a, a few years as well. And that concludes my portion of the CEO report. But then, uh, Marianne, Ms. Marianne McKenzie will give a briefing on, uh, the statistical report for the third quarter and also an update on the 2021-24, uh, strategic plan.
Hello, Ms. McKenzie? Oh, yes.
Just before you get started, just to give a shout-out to Montoya Barker, the, um, Special Collections Librarian at Central. She's amazing. She does these, um, regular meetings, um, in conjunction with the Indianapolis Historic Society. And she gets references and resources together and handouts. It's really, really remarkable program, so, just, it's pretty great.
Thank you for that.
Well, the Operation Statistics Report is in your packet. I'm just gonna highlight four slides for you. Um, the first one is gonna be on cardholder statistics. And. So the very first slide that you're gonna have in your packet is on cardholder statistics. And I'd just, uh, like to highlight that we have seen a dip in total cardholders this month, and that the reason for that is due to an annual, um, maintenance, uh, task that we do, where we remove cardholders who have not been using the library actively in the past three years. So they have engaged in essentially borrowing behavior, borrowed materials in some way. They still might have visited, they still might have used computers. But if they haven't borrowed an item digitally or physically in three years, to respect their privacy, we remove them from our records. So, the dip this year is about twice what we'd seen in the past two years. But if you look at the next, um, slide, I think. Uh, I might not have included it in your, um, packet, but it's in my live slides. There we go, okay. So essentially, we, we look at active cardholder percentages of our total cardholder, and that shot up to 65% this year, which is great, fantastic. But again, it's because of that removal of, um, cardholders. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of context for that dip. So this, um, up at the top here, you'll see in yellow and orange previous years, and then in blue, um, where we are 2024 with total cardholders. And you'll see that there's just this consistent dip. And you'll see that there's just this consistent dip right after June, where we do that sort of annual purge. We actually think that we may have to remove some additional users before the end of year. So we're expecting that number will continue to decrease, which is disheartening, because we would love to have our cardholders be our cardholders forever. But the key metric when it comes to cardholders is active cardholders, and that is continuing to grow year to year. So this is not necessarily a distressing trend. We're just getting more accurate data and making sure respecting the privacy of those who entrusted us with their personal information. But I did want to give you some context for that. The other thing that's happened is we are into our school year. And the school year always brings lovely students who are happy to get a new library card. So that is also impacting this data. We usually see a bump that will continue into quarter four as we finish enrolling students with their new cards. So that's very exciting. The other piece of this packet that I wanted to highlight for you is there was a significant increase in Wi-Fi utilization. And we suspect that that is because that we have invested in our system that allows patrons to connect to our Wi-Fi network. So a few months back, Shneke came to you all with improvements for that system. You approved them, they were installed. We're starting to see that result. So although we saw a market increase in quarter two and quarter three of this year of Wi-Fi utilization, it'll be a few more months till we know if that is a true increase or if that's just the result of investing into our infrastructure. So very happy that we are seeing this data, because it helps us determine the true utilization within our branch. And Wi-Fi utilization is something that we do report out to the state library. So it's a key metric for us. I also included one final slide at the end of your packet, which is accessible computer workstations. This is something that I will be adding in moving forward. So we have some information about general public PC usage. But our accessible workstations, the way we measure them is not the same as our general PCs. Our general PCs, we like to see them at, you know, around at least a third utilization of the total hours available. That shows us that we've got the sort of resource management market. But with computer workstations, it's about having them available for the people who need them. So it's more about total utilization. And we're seeing from quarter one to quarter three that that utilization is continuing to grow as the messaging about them gets out. And the patrons who need them have learned that they can come and receive some additional support from our accessible workstations. So I'm hoping that as we track this into the coming year, we will continue to see growth quarter to quarter. There is a lot more information in your packet. But out of respect for your time and the fact that I still have one more presentation potentially tonight, I just tried to focus in on the key highlights. But I'm happy to answer questions about anything contained.
Ms. McKenzie, so I just want to clarify. So that this 65%, so about more than a third of our card members usually are deemed dormant annually. So it's about a third, okay?
And there's a variety of reasons for that. Some of this is just general movement. These people move in or out of our service areas. Some of it is people who have, you know, perhaps identified that they benefit from the library in other ways, but borrowing is not one that they engage in on a frequent basis. And then some of it is some of the activities we do to make sure people get a library card. If we don't transfer that into them understanding the value of what we're offering them, that can be, you know, they'll get a card, we'll get a peek for a year from that push. But then after a year, they become inactive, and we start to see them show up. And the places that we see this, unfortunately, is the card campaigns and the shared system. But what we do is we monitor utilization of those cards within the first year. And we try and make sure that we're hitting a particular percentage. So in the strategic plan, I think the goal was 25% every year utilization. So we are willing to take the hit in total cardholders long-term, because we want to make sure that they have the option of using their card. And we're just continually trying to make sure we engage them to demonstrate that value, so that number grows over time.
I think I'm surprised, but it makes sense.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, and I'm sure that I've had years when I've gone without three years without checking out something, you know?
Yes.
So makes sense. Okay, thank you. That's probably consistent with some of our peer libraries.
The way people measure active cardholders varies drastically from peer to peer. So it's hard to find a good dataset to be certain of. We're following state library guidance for that annual purge of patrons. And that's, again, just a key piece of making sure your patrons feel safe registering with you is to ensure that your data is protected and secure, so.
Okay, so that's the state guideline, the three years?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, I also have an additional presentation, if you have no more questions on that one. I'm going to give you a speedrun of our current strategic plan. So to keep this information easily digestible, what I've done, we've looked at the past four years. And for every year, we've sort of said, you know, we're using a stop-flight motive here. Red means we didn't hit something. Yellow means we made progress, but we weren't there yet. Green means we achieved our objective. And then occasionally, we have something where we weren't working on it that year. And so you'll see these gray squares to demonstrate that we were loading. So what I'm going to do is walk you through the key objectives. This is not every objective, but this covers the same topics that we presented to you last year. And the only difference between what we presented last year and this year is I'm going to look at this with that four-year lens, because we're at the end of the plan. So the first goal we're going to look at is we had a goal of developing a more diverse collection. So this is our first racial equity objective. And this had a targeted spend for new dollars at 30% for African-American authors, 10% for Latinx authors, and 5% for LGBTQ+ authors. This is the only goal that I did this for. But in this case, we found early on, so the goal was to start that spend beginning in 2022. We found during 2021, I was planning to spend in 2022, that that goal was not achievable for reasons that were often beyond our control, due to publishing trends and the availability of the books that would actually increase the diversity of the collection, rather than investing in lots of copies of a single title that met the goal. So the team that supports this put in a lot of effort of coming up with some alternate strategies, so we could actually achieve collection diversity. So on the left, you're going to see our progress toward the goal is written. And you'll see it was yellow every year. We just couldn't hit that percentage in every category. But on the right, you'll see the results of their adjusted strategy. And it was sort of multifaceted. One thing that it did is it did look at combined diversity spend, allowing them to be responsive to the ebbs and flows of what was available in the publishing industry. But it also took a very targeted look at the total diversity in the collection, not just new acquisitions, but our entire print collection. So in quarter three of this year, they performed a diversity audit and found that we had 27% of our print collection was from diverse voices. That included topics beyond what was outlined in this goal, things like ability diversity, Asian-American authors. And the adjusted strategy has been effective enough that we're anticipating that some version of this will carry forward into the next strategic plan. So although we didn't meet the objective as written, we course corrected, and we think we have a stronger outcome as a result.
Are you still able to disaggregate how that 21% is allocated by the groups that you initially? I mean, you don't have to do it tonight if you don't have it, but by the groups that were initially identified?
I don't think I have that data on me for this year. We did report it for previous years, but we can provide that in our final annual report. Happy to do so.
It would be helpful to keep that front, too.
Yes.
Great to get to an aggregated thing. But and there is also important information in the disaggregated data that I think we want to keep in front of us.
Absolutely, yep. And like I said, we've continued, we kept the objective as public. We never officially adjusted this. I just wanted to highlight that adjusted strategy. So then we had Apply the Racial Equity Toolkit to 100% of Programming. We operationalized that in 2021. It's been going great, so all green every year. Objective that you all have spent a lot of time discussing is, of course, our XBE vendor goals of 27%. And of course, there are some subcategories. You'll see that every year, we were on yellow. And this was because we have never been able to hit the subcategory percentages. And again, I know you guys have spent a lot of time discussing this recently. So I don't think this is surprising. I know Adam mentioned a percentage for his department this year. I did ask when for our current year-to-date, at the end of September. And we were at 24.4% XBE spend. But it is common for the quarter four to have invoices coming in that winds up increasing us. So we currently believe we would be at at least 27% combined spend by the end of the year. We also wanted to increase staff recruitment by investing 50% of our hiring and diversity recruitment budget. We hit that every year except for 2023, because we had some unique hiring things going on in 2023, as you may recall. And we're currently at 56% at the start of quarter four. And we're anticipating we'll be around that by the end of the year. This is another strategy that has worked out well for us, and we anticipate seeing some version of this move forward as an objective into the next strategic plan. Next, we have partnerships. So we wanted to increase youth awareness of resources. And this was specifically through engaging with educators. So we did a survey in 2021, and we have been re-engaging educators less formally, so more informally, and adjusting every year with campaigns. And so this year, the two key campaigns were Summer Reading Program and then our Twice Annual Youth Program Guide. Both were distributed via schools to both educators and parents to promote our programs. We also had Create Partnerships with Culturally Diverse Community Organizations. You'll see that for quarter three of 2024, we're currently on yellow. So we're at about 68% at the start of quarter four. This is something that we track two times during the year. When people propose a program, we ask them, who are you planning to partner with? And at the end of their program, we ask them, what was the actual outcome? Were you able to partner with who you intended to? Because those are, many of our programs are annual programs, a large portion of this data comes in in January. So based off of their initial application, I expect we will exceed 75% by the end of the year. In digital technology, we really hit our strides over the four years. We have consistently delivered at least 600 technology training sessions. Technically, we're only at 580 when I pulled the data. But I did look at our calendar, and we had additional 20 sessions already scheduled before the end of the year. So we will definitely cross 600. We also wanted to complete the Digital Inclusion Roadmap by the end of 2021. That one got a little rocky at the beginning. You received it on yellow. We didn't actually adopt it until, I think, the beginning of 2023. But we were working on the recommendations from it, and we have continued to work on them. The Digital Inclusion Committee that supports this shared two projects from this year that they're very proud of. One was a one-on-one computer support guide for staff with best practices of how to support patrons at the computer. And the other was some information and training on how to use the accessibility features available on our public computers. The two other key objectives under digital and technology were redesigning the learning curve. If you've been to Central recently, the wall is up. Construction has begun, so we are on track to achieve this by the end of the plan. Technically, the plan was to redesign, and the designing is done. So I went ahead and gave us a green there. For number four, we had continue to offer high-quality STEAM programs. And we have met our goal of continuing to offer every year. And in fact, year to year, we have continued to increase the STEAM programs we offer. Currently, we're at 18% increase over 2023 at the same period. And so this is, again, something that we are finding is valuable. We're still meeting a need. We'll be moving this forward in some form into the next strategic plan. Next, we have education. So promote resource sharing between schools and NDL. Our official goal for this was trying to get 2% growth of shared system circulation. We have hit 2% every year. Currently, year-to-date, we're at 4.9%. So this is something that we are, again, hitting our strides in. So we are anticipating we'll be green by the end of the year. Deliver high-quality professional development for educators. You'll see that we were green at the beginning of this, and then we went to yellow, and we've stayed yellow. The official goal there was 15 professional development programs per year. So we started at 15. The next year, we went down to nine, and then to seven. And then this year, we're currently at three sessions. The context there is that the goal was to partner with outside organizations to deliver these and to make sure we're meeting the needs of educators. And the requirements for receiving the actual credit for professional development changed. So our ability to offer them using our staff shifted. And our partners were telling us, hey, this is not quite meeting the need. So we've adjusted our strategy to look more at coming alongside existing professional development programs to reinforce what the library can offer. And where possible, when we have a partner who says, hey, we need professional development, we're still engaging in that and meeting that need. So we're not hitting the mark. We will not hit the mark by the end of the year. But we have learned a lot about how we can support educators that will carry forward into the next plan. Under reading and writing, you're going to see a lot of reds, because reading and writing is, of course, core to the library. And we were very ambitious, which is fantastic. But it meant that these were what we were calling stretch goals. We really wanted to hit them. We tried our hardest, but we knew that there was a possibility we might not achieve them. The first one was 20% of our service area's active cardholders. We are currently at around 18%. I think it's 17.8%. And we've grown about 1% every year, which is pretty decent growth. But we just are not going to be able to hit that 20% by the end of this. So disappointing, but understandable. Next, we had increased usage of library card campaign cards to 25% annually. We have hit this every year. This was the measurement I was talking about earlier. I did not pull the data for 2024, because we are in the middle of the school year, and we see our best results a couple months into the kids having their cards. So we'll include this information in your final update on the plan in the annual report.
What is the number that corresponds to 20% of the service area? If you don't, I mean, I can get that. I'm just interested to know, what would that number of cardholders be?
So I think we're about 850,000 for Indianapolis, if you exclude Speedway, so 20% of that. But I can't do that math in my head.
Thank you.
All right. So then we have another very ambitious goal, 10.5 million circulation in 2023. I think the pandemic really impacted us here, because those first couple of years, growth was slow. And the years since the pandemic, we've really seen strong growth in our physical circulation. We wanted to hit 10.5 million. I'm projecting we're probably going to cross around 9 million. So not hitting this goal, but we made a valiant effort and are very proud of the progress we've made so far. Health and Wellness. This was a great one to reflect on, because it turns out that our Health and Wellness partnerships and our patrons who are participating in these programs love us. So we could hit our strides consistently across all these objectives. We wanted 15 programs annually. This year, we are at 284. We wanted to increase our collection by 25% by end of 2023. We hit it by the end of 2023 and are now in that collection maintenance phase to make sure it remains relevant and robust in the coming years. We wanted to deliver one system-wide event annually, focusing on the disproportionate impact on communities of color and health disparities. That was our Community Resource Fair. We started with one. We're now at offering four this year, and we're planning to move that program forward annually. And as Gregory mentioned, there is one coming up in November here at Central Library. And those have been very well attended and embraced by the community. Connecting with health partners. We had put that we're going to do that semi-annually. Any given month, there's somebody offering a health partnership, tabling, or hosting outreach. Our partners love us, and we have really hit our strides there. So we are definitely in the green there. Something that is a little bit more of a mix, financial literacy. Collection development. We went green in 2023. We're in that collection maintenance, making sure that remains relevant. So this one, we are all set. Great work for us. When it comes to expanding classes, English-language classes, to 15 annually, technically, the goal was to do this online. And we realized very early on that post-pandemic online was not the place for this. We have offered 72 financial programs so far in 2024. And this is because we had some great partnerships that help with things such as preparing for taxes, planning for retirement. So this one has been great. The one that we struggled with is expanding immigrant and refugee programming. We wanted to do 20 classes annually. We have some great partnerships with, as you heard, with groups that work with these populations. But we haven't been able to translate those partnerships into solid programs that we can present on our own or for presenters that we can engage. And when we have offered them, the attendance has been somewhat weak. So this is something that we still have a lot to learn as we move into the next strategic plan and focus on financial well-being. And that's your speedrun. Any questions?
Just wanted to go back to the education one. And you were noting that we were delivering high-quality high-quality professional development for educators?
Yes.
And you said the requirements have changed, and we have dropped from nine to seven to three sessions. Are we asking educators themselves what they would like professional development?
Yes, we, we work and listen with our shared system outreach. The Programming Department, PDA, does outreach with early literacy educators who might not be impacted by shared system and other partnerships. And then we work, so like this year, the three that we offered were through co-engagement with YMCA. So what happened is a lot of that outreach now happens, as you heard with the presentation from this branch manager, Melinda, a lot of times, it's a school will tell us, I'm having professional development for my staff. Can you come and explain how their resources can expand their impact? That's a great way to increase educators' engagement with the library, but it doesn't quite meet the criteria for the strategic plan, where we were looking at us offering essentially a in-house day where they come and get trained on literacy or other things.
Or it works differently when you go to the, to the school.
Yep. So like I said, we learned a lot there. I think Sho Widenbach, our Youth Services Arm, has some great ideas for how to continue to engage with educators in the next strategic plan, but we're just finding that that goal as written, we didn't want to chase after a number if the feedback we were receiving from our partners was that it wasn't meeting a need, and our attendance numbers in those definitely reflected that it wasn't.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Really good information. McKenzie, appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, McKenzie. If there's no further questions, that concludes my CEO report.
Any comments or questions of the CEO? Thank you, Mr. Hill. We'll move on to agenda item number 11, unfinished business. None, no new business. And item 13 is where we take time to request from board members, any suggestions for topics to be included on future library board agendas? Are there any suggestion from, suggestions from board members regarding the November 2024 board meeting?
I'd like for us to revisit what we are doing for social services. I appreciated Mr. Torres' comments about what we did with Yana. She came and presented several times. What are we doing now for social services? I'd like to see where the gap is and what, how we will proceed.
We did receive an email from Mr. Helling over the past month about the changes that have been made in the structure in response to the assessment that was made of social services. Greg, did we decide we were gonna have someone come?
The social worker will, she will be here for next month's board meeting in November, and then Alexis Hunt, the manager of CBLC, will do the December reporting. So you'll get updates for those two in November, December.
Okay. Any other topics, suggestions for topics? Okay, we'll move on. We have no, we have, we have special meetings scheduled. We have an executive session scheduled for October 31st at 10:30. Right? The next regular meeting will be Monday, November 25th at the InfoZone Branch Library at 3,000 North Meridian Street, and I'm so excited. I just start smiling because in case you don't know, that is the address for the children's museum. Besides actually maybe being able to walk there from my house, I just think it's great. The InfoZone branch is small, so we weren't gonna be able to meet there, and I asked Greg, can we, is there any way we could get in there? So they are setting up for us and looking forward to being able to be in the children's museum next month. It is not, no. And I, I think Angie may have sent out the update. Yeah. And I think she updated the calendar.
Yes, she did.
Okay. And hearing no further, having no further business, I do want to thank all of our board members, our staff liaisons, our sound people for an additional half hour of your life tonight. I did think we heard some interesting information, had some productive conversation, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.